We call this meeting and the planning board to order at 7:02. Today's November 21st, 2019. We'll start with a roll call.
Jamie.
Oh, a trip.
Jamie Lowery.
Tom Jan.
Susan Rawl.
Roger Moore.
Rich Canong.
Jens Bergen.
Pat Redway.
Okay, we have before us, we have an approval of the agenda. On the agenda, we have public comments, approval of the minutes for November 17th, changes to the bylaws and procedures, we have some discussion items. We have proposed amendments to the land use ordinance, there are two items there for shoreline zoning in the RC District. Then we have other ordinance plans, open space plan and NSBA, and then we have other business. I would like to propose that since we have a representative from ACT here, that we move item one on other ordinance and plans, the open space plan, move that to item one on the agenda.
So I had some discussion there that I know another member of ACT is looking to attend, but had another meeting tonight and is hoping to get here by about 7:30-ish.
Well, then it's, we'll leave it up to Donna if she wants, if she's willing to wait.
Let's, I mean, it's a thing.
As soon as she gets here, we can, we can.
Okay, Pat.
Okay?
Is it new one?
So in that case, we're gonna leave the agenda the way it is.
That works fine.
You've got to give me your package, Steve.
Right.
Did I get a package?
Oh, yes, you got an electronic package.
Oh, yes, it was extended, okay.
It was extended.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I didn't inform that I'm gonna be getting this out for.
Let's, let's go back to the agenda. We're gonna leave it the way it is.
Okay.
For the moment, when Leah shows up and we will update the agenda at that point. Oh, I have that, I have it all.
Yes, so do we have official motion and approval?
I need a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I have seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It is so moved, unanimous? Public comment, anybody from the public have a comment unrelated to what's on the agenda? Hearing none from the two public members available, we will move on. Approval of the minutes for November 7th of 2019.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes as written and... Well, look at that, we have enough people to approve it. We have three of us that were here.
The 7th, you were not. I wasn't there either.
Oh, that was a s-
Right, I don't have anything.
Oh, you're right, there's only two of us, no.
No.
Jamie, Tom and I were here.
Okay, wasn't Jens here there?
That was Jens.
Oh, yeah, that was, yes.
I wasn't here.
No, but the 7th, yeah.
Oh, he's not, okay.
He was not. So we had the three of us, Jamie, Tom and I. Yep, so, motion was made and seconded, you can't second it though.
Okay.
That was the meeting we just had over in the other room.
Roger, you were here, why haven't you?
Did I not put him in?
Oh, yeah, oh, I'm sorry, he is here.
So Roger can still come?
We have, we have four of us that have been here, yes, we're good to go. Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
Is there an extension?
No.
Yes, well, we abstained.
Right here, yeah.
Thank you.
We have two, Susan and Lee.
Hey, I tried really hard.
Wow, look at that.
The next item of our list. Changes to the bylaws and procedures.
Was that both minutes?
We only have one, November 7th.
Oh, I thought we tabled one, another one. Didn't we table one last time because we didn't have a form?
October 24th.
Is that the October 24th?
Yeah, I think that was the one that I was not at.
Again, I, I'm a delinquent and don't have everything, so I don't know. But we do have one that we did table last time.
I didn't see that at all.
Which I actually, I think I already sent to you, did you see my note?
Yeah, I had made changes, I had made the necessary changes.
Oh, yeah, this just says with the removal of approval, but it didn't have the date. Okay, yeah, I'm not quite sure, I, because we had to approve the minutes and-
Oh, approval of minutes, sorry, my fault.
Yeah, it should've just been tabled. Do we have enough people here from that meeting?
Should we table it from this time?
The date of that was?
October 24th?
October 24th.
I didn't really have one. I wasn't here.
I think you should.
I think we should.
I was here, oh, so I'm here.
You were here.
Yeah, Roger was here.
I was here.
It was the one you directed there.
That's the one you chaired.
Oh, it was the one I chaired, yeah.
You must have been here.
So there's three of us.
Roger was here too.
Roger, Jens and I were here.
So if Roger, Jens and Susan want to approve it, we can do so.
Okay, well, I move that we approve the minutes of October 24th.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded for approval of the minutes of October 24th. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
The extensions, there's three of us.
Okay.
So moved, good, solves that issue. Onto changes in, to the bylaws. A discussion and changes to the planning board bylaws and procedures. We're gonna start with the first one, which is sidewalk. We seem to have an issue getting people at the sidewalks, and so we've got a proposal to establish a bylaw, and we actually have four different recommendations for the, for a bylaw. Have any of you had a chance to look them over?
Yeah.
Any comments, suggestions, one you like better than the others?
Well-
Or none of the above and we work something else out.
I have no clear idea, I feel like we're getting spanked here because we haven't been attending, but I, I think number two, to only vote if they attend this given sidewalk is sometimes I've missed some and they've been filled in by those who were there. Also, if there was a string of, sometimes we've had, like on the daycare, we had a number of sidewalks, and if you miss one, you miss all of them. That's one that I thought might, it might get, it might not resolve the problem.
Correct.
Well, I also have a suggestion because the last one, I was coming back from California and we had a lot of confusion about the time and that I had confusion about the day as well, when the sidewalks were actually taking place, so would an Outlook calendar invite that goes on our calendars or something so that, you know, when we have days where we have multiple sidewalks and times, do you know which one I'm talking about, Tad?
Yeah, it was Linda Zook.
Linda Zook, and then the one was Mark Knatner. So, I don't know, maybe some more, an electronic way to remind people.
Well, I think, Tad, you have been sending out more reminders of the sidewalks a couple days before they take place.
But then we were talking about the time and it went back and forth and I don't remember confirmation of time, but I was coming back from the airport and so trying to get here.
I think that was one separate incident, what we've been having is the problem of making forums on sidewalks, I schedule a sidewalk, I shouldn't say that, you schedule sidewalks, you guys schedule it and then we don't have a forum that shows up, which puts the applicant in that, this playboard in it, not the best of all positions, and leaves us with, again, a situation where the applicant's waiting for the board to come out and make certain decisions in the field based on field conditions.
I agree, I mean, I think if we say we're coming, we should come.
Yeah, I agree, but it's, I think that it's important to have these things timely and move things along, so if we are in the process of trying to schedule a time and it's not coming together, then I think this proposal number three here makes some sense if we, if we do that in advance. But I mean, I think the default rule or the sort of the standing procedure ought to be that, you know, you're expected to go.
Yeah, I agree.
And I think, and right now we're faced with the issue that for a quorum, we need four, I think if we went with number three and had a subcommittee of three people, we may not get the quorum, but we would have three people.
I think that's a good solution because most of the time we can get through, but we have work schedules and travel and other things that make it difficult to deal with.
Right, it's one thing planning every, every second or third Thursday at seven, you know it's coming, but sidewalks are kind of moving target.
Right.
Well, that's worse, a lot of times you've gotta make them on Saturdays.
Yeah, so you can get there in the morning.
I personally would like to see some sidewalks first thing in the morning.
Good point, first thing.
7:30.
Yeah.
That works for me.
It might be. I don't know. Yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't change me because I'm usually up anyway.
I'm good with that, Saturday morning.
You might be able to do that too, and the thing is, if you did, well, if you did the subcommittee approach, you know, that could happen there instead, that doesn't preclude any other members from going out on their own, the cognizance, go out there and they might have a minute.
I don't know, that's the issue I'm not sure about.
Why?
We have to get the owner's permission to go onto the property.
Well, I think essentially when you have, when you make an application to the planning board for an activity on your property or actually give the planning board access to access the property or to look at the property.
But we're scheduling a sidewalk to do that.
We could ask permission, most of the time they would even offer to drop by any time, but we could ask, it is private property.
So I think we should kind of blend three and forty, ah, not four.
Three and two.
Three and two together.
One and two?
Well, so that we have three people that are going to show up for the sidewalk, more if they can make it, if you can't make it, then you go, you contact the owner and you just have permission to do the sidewalks, okay?
So I think, I think two's gonna end up being problematic.
Yeah.
I really do, because, you know, you're gonna end up having to inventory back who's gone to a sidewalk and can you vote, and you're gonna, you know, show up at a meeting and be ready to go and, you know, you've only got, you know, four people were at the sidewalk, but, you know, a little more, only two of them, you know, maybe we've got five people here and only two of them showed up to the sidewalk and-
Yeah, I agree with you, Jamie, I said three and two, I actually meant three and one, three and one.
So-
Three and four?
Well, no, I think, I think on four, well, yeah, kind of, I think on, if we did three, just add the bullet point on there afterward, members may visit the site at their leisure and opportunity if they're unable to make that sidewalk.
Or you might have a full, you might have a full quorum.
We might.
I don't think that, I mean, ultimately, I don't think that needs to be established in the bylaws.
Okay, and it's a valid point.
But I, but maybe you put a caveat on the end of it where I thought you were going is that every effort should be made if you, you know, we sort of take an informal poll of the board, who can make a sidewalk on, you know, Tuesday night or Saturday morning or whenever it is, and you sort of get a sense of, okay, you think we're gonna have four people, if you say, yeah, you're gonna be the one that's gonna be there, you make every effort to be there, or, you know, need to provide some advance notice that you won't
Could you word that a little better?
No.
Okay.
Aren't we establishing that a forum would be three members?
No.
Can you legally do that? Because that was my first thought, instead of the whole subcommittee thing, can we just make up, say that, you know, three members make a legitimate sidewalk?
Yeah, just say any three members that show up.
Right.
Formal legitimate sidewalk, and if it's only three, then they have to report back to the rest of the board in terms of, you know.
No, maybe anyway, right.
And if they report back to the board, then those members who have gotten the information secondhand, are they able to vote?
Yes.
Okay.
We are now.
Right.
Okay.
We have no restrictions right now on sidewalks, the object is to make it more, sidewalks less of a problem because there's been some situations where we didn't get a quorum and the application didn't move forward until we get the sidewalk, and that was a necessary obstruction to the applicant.
Yeah, it cost them too.
And I think we've almost always-
As I said, it does, it does look good for the board and we don't wanna have that situation, so the object here is to come up with a procedure for dealing with sidewalks, to make it easier for sidewalks to occur and enable also the board to go on, for those members who can't make a called sidewalk, then they can go and make a sidewalk at their leisure, and I actually really never run into a problem where unless it's a condition used for like a home daycare or something like that, never run into a problem with an applicant who will have any problems with coming up to the sidewalk. We can put that as a caveat in your application form saying, has the authority to visit the site in order to ascertain what is, what is going to, what the applicant's proposal is.
And what do we mean by what amendments to petition process, what do you have in mind?
We'll get to that.
Oh, we're getting there, okay.
Well, I was gonna make a motion that we adopt number three, establishing a subcommittee consisting of three members.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to establish a subcommittee consisting of three members who attend a sidewalk and report their findings back to the board. Any other discussion on that?
It's not, it's not gonna be a standing committee, is it?
No.
Okay, so it's an ad hoc.
It'll be an ad hoc committee, it just allows us to have four instead of four, pretty much.
I'll put that in the bylaws so it doesn't look like it's a new meeting.
Yeah.
We'll still advertise it as a sidewalk, it's not a meeting which we have to have minutes.
I'll second that. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous, it's a wonderful thing. Determin, well, it is. Determination of completeness. We've got confusion about what constitutes a complete application. Right, this was taken straight out of the land use ordinance, correct?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, the underlined section is actually from, from, uh, 10-6, two-year-long site plan procedures, which all, both the strong and zoning can, the initial use applications follow the separate procedures.
I thought it was interesting that you, you had made the note that it might be prudent for the planning board as a group to review the submission checklist on the back of the application so that we can make that determination that it's complete and that we have everything that we need, and just remembering that determination of completeness doesn't mean that we're gonna vote in the affirmative or the negative, it just means we've got everything that the application says we're supposed to submit, so we don't have people coming in going, oh, I didn't know you needed that, well, it's on the application. And I think that needs to be explained. I don't know how you can make that any clearer, it's on the application.
It's very clear on the application.
But we can, we can look at it and review it to make sure that it's all there.
So one, one of the big things that is debatable is whether, like, say they're waiting for DEP permit, they don't have it in hand, but it's in the process with this that.
Well, we've, we've always said, submit proof that you've applied to the DEP.
Is that what includes submission receipts?
Yes.
Yes, as long as they've submitted, that-
Right.
DEP will give you a submission, or else you have the copy of your DPR.
That works, maybe.
That's why we solved it because in the ordinance originally, it said you had to have your DEP permits in here, which caused some problems, if you don't, if you don't have your permits, I mean, it's a condition of approval in all of our approvals that you've got to furnish your DEP permits prior to the start of construction. If you don't have them, then you don't proceed, it goes back to the planning board.
So we'll just add section D, determination of completeness. Before taking action on an application, the planning board shall formally review all submissions to determine if the applicant has provided all of the information required by the land use ordinance and the subdivision regulations for approval. The application submission checklist shall be reviewed by the board prior to determining an application complete. I think that's, that's an important thing to do, my concern is that it might delay the process by one meeting because we're gonna have to determine that the application is complete, we're gonna have to look at, at the submission requirements and go down through them and then, and then determine whether or not the application is complete. Do we wanna do that at a meeting with the applicant here or do we wanna do that before you?
No, well, I, I mean, don't we do it now with the application present?
But we don't review it.
By tens we do. I would say, I would say, I would say we review it more than we don't, with the exception of some very, very basic type of applications that, you know, may not-
I don't remember looking through the, through the checklist on the back of the, generally we end up getting asked to waive these different items.
Well, right, but I mean, part of the, what I'm picturing is part of the, is the submission checklist that has the boxes, you know, submitted, not applicable, request to be waived, you know.
Yeah, we do that.
Right, that's what I'm thinking of is the application checklist.
Okay.
Is that, am I incorrect?
No, that's, that's-
No, evidently I'm incorrect.
Okay.
No, it is in the application, it's the application checklist and we can go through that very quickly.
Yeah, I mean, in all-
And what it's saying is, it's not in the regulations, it's in the bylaws, and it said, this is what we do, this is our procedure, we're gonna go through this, I don't think it, I think it's just another, another step we take during the review process, it shouldn't be a hard one, everybody can make, and if there's a question, I don't think that's sufficient, then it comes up then, not later.
Okay.
So it helps both the applicant and helps the board, and it helps staff, because I'll go through it and I, the good one would be aimed where, okay, I think this is okay, and so the board member said, no, that's not a suitable enough submission, we need more, and we did that because it came up from the application and we were looking specifically at certain things that were supposed to provide.
But it also, but it also doesn't mean that we have to accept whatever is submitted without comment or, you know, so if a stormwater plan or a lighting plan is submitted and we think that maybe, maybe they've done it, but it could use a little more beef or it could use some modifications, we've got the opportunity to, to request those, those changes be made.
Okay.
In fact, it's something that we probably should've always been doing anyways, and I can't, I think we kind of were, but not always, not, yeah.
Sometimes you do some-
This way it just codifies it.
We'll just clarify it in the bylaws and say, this is the process.
And it won't take long.
No.
It's a glance.
Actually makes the applicant feel better to know that the board wants them to come back later.
Right.
Yeah, and say, oh, gee, we forgot about this.
You do a groundworm study.
Right, yeah, last minute.
Right.
Usually, something that big, it usually, go get your groundworms.
But-
But it can, yeah.
Okay, somebody make the motion.
I'll make the motion, we adopt, it's written as paragraph D.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion's been made and seconded for the, to adopt the board procedure of determination of completeness, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous.
Effective immediately?
Effective immediately.
Immediately, you don't have any application.
Which is why we can do it immediately.
Oh, no, you have one, you have one in this chamber.
The next one is public hearings, and the criteria, well, no, Leah's not really just looking. Public hearings.
Now you know how I feel.
Jamie, you're on camera.
They probably want to take that back.
I can't edit that out, Jamie.
All right, we did, we just need to reach a definitive point in when we're gonna have public hearings for subdivisions, site plans, conditional uses, shoreline zoning. In the not-too-far past, we have run into that role in public hearings.
That's almost another issue though, went to schedule and then how to, how to manage public hearings versus planning board meetings.
Right, and we can, we can work on that, but the question is, when do we have a public hearing? The one thing we should not be doing is having a determination of completeness at a public hearing on the same night or within three days of the determination of completeness, that should not be happening. It doesn't give you any time to advertise the public hearings.
So the clock starts ticking after 30 days from the public hearing?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then you've got the two, the two-
The extensions if the, if the applicant wants it.
So we've been fitting in public hearings early to give the neighbors a chance to be, become aware, but you're saying, I agree, maybe that, that's just-
That could, that could be modified.
Yeah.
I mean, we could have a preliminary public hearing, it's gonna get more expensive because somebody has to pay for it.
Can we advertise that on the fourth and plus hour? Which is more expensive.
I guess right now, though, you send everybody a postcard or an email notification that, for the abutters?
No.
No, okay.
No, I don't, no, because I only have her emails.
Okay.
I send a little letter, 50 cent letter, notification to all the abutters, and what I do with, and I'm starting to do this now because it's, because the plaintiffs are caught, you're under no legal obligation to notify the abutters of a sidewalk, but we're now getting to the point where because we've had some contentious applications, I'm getting to the habit now of, you know, following and doing work and sending out those notifications up quickly, you know, as soon as we know we've got an application we call a sidewalk so that the abutters can have enough time to participate in the process. After that, they're on their own until afternoon before public hearing, and you know, what it says on the abutters' notifications, it advises them to, if they want to track what's happening with the planning board's doing, it gives them a link to the signing up for the automatic email notifications on the website, so that way if they're truly interested, they can link into that, know what's happening, and also link into the other minutes to find So that's actually a staff decision, it's not copied by the unions.
With meals?
It's a shame because it's such a big expense.
Yeah, it's 50 cents a letter.
Yeah, no. Not to mention the time and the material. Not to mention the time and the material.
So, I mean, I have no, no issue with the, I guess, the discussion there about the, about calling it, doing a public hearing at the time of the determination of completeness. Now, I mean, I think we can, we can do that, um, you know, I think one of the, one of the positive features of our planning board, you know, to the community is that we do allow, and I would, I would suggest more limited discussion from people before an official public hearing, in that, you know, somebody could say, look, you know, rebutter so-and-so, you know, just have concerns or whatever, and not get into, you know, a full-blown, you know, debate and tit-for-tat of, no, your groundwater study said this, and my stormwater analysis says that, and that, you know, that to me should be official public hearing type of, of discourse. But, you know, I, I think, you know, we're, we're not that formal of a group, and that's a good thing, and, you know, some limited, you know, feedback from the public is, is a good thing early on in the process.
And submissions by a butler or an interested party can be accepted by the planning board at any time. I usually get things from them and usually submit it to the board for a public hearing, but I can give it to you sooner than that, it's all depends on your internal protocol.
Well, I think we should get that as soon as it comes in, as opposed to having somebody show up at a public hearing and start trying to hand out paperwork, which has happened.
That happens a lot, and, and most, many people usually provide that to me in advance. We've had some cases where it's been provided at me.
And I take...
Because the board doesn't get to see it until the meeting, and then the meeting is slowed down by that.
And that was my fault, because I, I allowed them to do it. I shouldn't have, but I did.
But you know, I see the, I see the public hearing as a, you know, speak now or forever hold your peace type of avenue, in that we as a board have the ability, legal ability, if, you know, we're ready to, uh, to vote on something, you know, public hearing's been opened and closed, we're ready to vote, and somebody all of a sudden comes up and says, well, hold on, I wanted to say this, we've got the ability to say, no, sorry, you've had plenty of opportunity, you know, you're too late.
Well, I think even during the public hearing, you know, if you've got something that you want, and I don't, I don't know how to let people learn, but if you've got something you want to disseminate to the board, get it to us before the hearing. Giving it to us during the hearing doesn't give us a chance to look at it and, and to figure out what it is the plan said.
I can be more forceful with the notice, the notice does say you can, um, comment or you can submit your comments in writing to me, which means beforehand.
Yeah, yeah, well, then stipulate at least, you know, however many days in advance.
Yeah, should be, if, if you're going to be making a comment, you should know a couple of days ahead of time exactly what you're gonna be saying.
Well, no, I don't, I don't, I, so, I don't think comment should be that way.
No.
Because not everybody, you know, you, you come to the meeting, but if you're, if you are, you know, formally refuting a study that a consultant has done, you know, you've got a consultant, you've paid to do that, having them show up the night of the meeting and, and with a, a study that refutes parts of it, I think should be a little more advanced so that it can be reviewed.
And the applicant can be prepared to be able to respond.
Right.
Because, I mean, we've seen it in several cases where it'd be a push rock.
Yep.
And they, they don't have their, the appropriate consultant there, and so we don't get a clear picture from two consultants battling it out, which is...
Exactly.
So really, the, the fair way to do it.
To do it, but, uh, give my impression, we've always, we have been informal, and by, by drawing the line, that, that's up to the chair to do, but it's gonna be, um, breaking our, our culture, is it, we, 'cause we have been allowing everybody, and then all of a sudden say, no, no, you've paid, you're not gonna listen, that will, uh, cause some issues. I don't know, yeah, I know if something needs to be done, but, but it, in practice, it would be a little more difficult with the group, you know, we can picture thirty people all opposing something, someone wants to hand something in, if you were to say, no, we have thirty people, that would be irate.
But I, but, but to both Tad and Jamie's point, if you've got something such as a study, or, or anything else, even pictures of, you know, those should be turned in. You, you want us to consider that, you should get it to us before the public hearing. The public hearing is more for the applicant to be able to respond to the concerns and the questions that the neighbors have about what's going on. We shouldn't be, be doing anything from a deliberation point of view, that's for the public and the applicant to, to discuss what's going on. We've had our discussions with, with the applicant already, we know what, what they want. If, if, and a butler wants us to review something, they should be giving it to us to review at some point other than a public hearing.
And I can't argue with that, I agree with that, but, but again, putting it into practice is...
Sadly, it's only gonna take one or two times before people start giving us the, the information. There'll be a couple of people the first, first time, the second time that happens, not gonna be happy with this.
That's assuming...
But we have to, we have to establish it at some point.
That's assuming people pay attention to, to what goes on here, and usually, it's a different, different whole group comes in, depending on which is in their neighborhood or not.
We're up to twenty-eight views on our videos, so... Is that you going again and again?
No, but one of them's...
Is that a, is that a high water?
Yeah, I know. But, I mean, I, I will, let me say this time to that, um, there are several of us who have been at other planning boards in other towns, and I can tell you that there are a lot more, there's some towns that are a lot more stricter about public hearings and protocol.
Yeah.
And when they say, that's it, that's it.
It would save us a lot of headaches if we did that, but...
There may be blowback, but there are also realization that the board can do its business and give all parties, you know, a fair shake, you know, that it is time to close the discussion, and the board does have to have the ability to make, make its decisions without a lot of theatrics sometimes, or a lot of, people are upset because they didn't come to the public hearing, they didn't submit anything in the last minute, they wanna speak while you're making, while you're right, reading the findings of that, it happened, yeah.
That happens.
It does happen.
It did happen, yeah.
And I, you know, I, I think one of the easiest ways to just notify the butters, and then when they, when they show up, hopefully during the course of discussion, it can be mentioned that, you know, if you've got something you want the board to look at, you have to give it to us before the public hearing, give us time to be able to review it. Now, in most cases, before the public hearing means two weeks earlier, because the hearing doesn't get scheduled for that night, it gets scheduled for two weeks later. So they should be able to get us information that we can look at. Just don't give it to me Wednesday night thinking I'm gonna look at it for Thursday.
So, do we put that into the ordinance, or...
I can put it into the, the butters', I have a standard template for a butters' notice, there's an alternative template, that becomes part of your culture. Because I, you have to give it at least three days in advance in the public hearing. But, three days is fair.
I think they're being personally notified, but, but...
Well, the only ones being personally notified are the butters.
Right.
And that's really the ones who should be most, yeah, who can't most.
Yeah, it impacts them more than anybody else.
It can impact the whole neighborhood, and the word gets around it.
Word, word would get around, though.
We found that out, too.
Quite quickly, people that are against something will gather strong there.
It'll end up on, on Facebook, in the, uh, Rundle chat.
I think Chip has a question.
Yeah, Chip.
Does a definite, does a butler include people across the street?
Yes. Yeah, 'cause I know I get...
The town needs to do a better job of figuring out who butters are.
Well, I got notified when Walter Woods did his, uh, his part, and I don't know what he...
I have not been notified twice, and was told by, at Town Hall, that the tax map was hard to read.
Not going there. That, that becomes a, an office management issue.
Probably, they're managed to be... If, if you're trying to set a hard and fast rule about people getting information to the planning board prior, pre, prior to a meeting, if there's a breakdown in communication with a butler, that's not fair.
But, and I would, I would counter Chip that that's grounds for abuse.
Was this for...
The horse has already left the park.
The horse can give, roll back in very quickly if, you know...
Procedural area.
Yep.
Yeah, 'cause I don't, I don't know about anybody else up here, you were up here. We know, we know about the hearings 'cause we serve, serve up here, but we don't get notified of them. I got a notification on Walter Woods, I was amazed.
I did those notifications, that's all.
Oh, I was amazed.
Do, you know, I'm thinking about this, are the applicants required to provide in a butler's list?
Yes.
Yes.
And do you check that?
I try to, I get a list of fifty, I'm usually feeling pretty good about that, that they cover the base.
Well, that seems, that seems right, Don, if it's, if then, if a failure like Chip experienced, that gives rise to the opportunity for an appeal, and that's to incumbent on the applicant to really be...
Right.
Blocked and there...
Very inclusive.
I explain that to the applicant, Chip, they always ask, do I really have to do that, and I said, well, I can do it, I'll charge you, you know, two hundred bucks an hour.
Do you tell them, uh, do it really carefully, 'cause if you screw it up...
I'd say, it's, if you, if you, you don't notify all the people, it's grounds for appeal, the planning board will walk back there for it, we're not gonna go to court, and then go to court over a procedural yard.
Period.
Not gonna do that.
Right, 'cause you could get sent to the mission.
Well, yeah, and then there's, then there's attorney fees, that's how we have to pick up, we're not doing that.
Okay. I know it's not the perfect answer, but...
Were these building permits, or were these planning board stuff, Chip?
They were both building permits, but it...
Yeah, and, I don't deal with the building permit notifications, I'm sorry, I, I don't, that's alchemy to me, I don't know how to...
I, I respect you, Chip, I just, it's...
It's a good point.
The town is incapable of getting in a butler's correct fulfillment permit, it's reasonable for me to question the ability to get a correct for public hearing.
All right, okay, on to special exception criteria. Yeah, we've been long that pose for special criteria.
Yeah, you reject every single term of law, but you pass it for shoreline zoning.
Yeah, we just used it.
And you just used it. Well, we don't have really a good criteria for it. You know, it could be arbitrary, because when you start handing it out every, anybody who asks, we've gotta have some standards of how you qualify for a special exception. Special exception zoning is exactly that, it is a special exception, it's gotta be extraordinary, the conditions have to be unusual. It's almost like a ZVA variance, in most cases, you shouldn't give it. Actually, in that particular case, it actually did qualify, I, I think that would have qualified those these standards right here.
Right, but, I mean, when I asked you about that when we spoke on the phone, you gave me very specific, you know, things that would disqualify the application for a special exception, and those things that would allow it to go forward, and so I was able to make a determination based on what you told me, so isn't that the criteria?
I think we should codify the criteria.
Okay, and I'm...
Because if, you can be challenged on it if we don't have set standards on why it was approved, it's no different than the criteria we have for a cycling, the criteria for approval for a conditional use of the criteria that we're approving.
Right, and I'm agreeing with you, and I...
You go down those, those steps, the same orthism, this, 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 this one.
So I, I like this criteria that, that has been laid out.
And that's basically what you...
Pretty much.
Helped me on the telephone, so, you know, made it very clear.
And I would say, any, any other criteria that you can think of that would be important in this situation, because, you know, fifty feet is the, is the accepted norm of, the minimum accepted norm of setback from, from a wetland edge. And when I say the accepted norm, that's pretty much accepted universally, um, from a biological standpoint, but, um, in a stormwater standpoint, I don't think it's enough, but in cer, with certain ones, but in these situations, in these specific situations, there would be, um, there'd be an impact, be, there'd be an impact to that, to that one. Jamie, what you think about that, when we do this stuff?
About these?
Yeah. Because reasonable criteria?
Yeah, I mean, I, I haven't given it a thorough review, but they seem to be, you know, seem to be okay, I mean, you're talking about a, just for a shoreline overlay, right?
Just for a shoreline overlay wetland, which, which...
Right.
Which is a forested wetland or shrub scrub swamp, you know, in the Cowardin system, and, uh, you know, it's a reduction down in feet, it doesn't have to automatically go to twenty-five feet, you can say, okay, we'll give you forty feet.
Right.
You know, or...
Just not gonna dump one fifty.
Just not gonna...
Given you the exception.
Yeah, we've given you the exception because of, because of very unusual conditions in the property.
So, I'll, so, so perhaps we say too, that, um, the minimum, in other words, they get to take the minimum off of what the required setback is. So instead of taking, like in Linda Zoo's case, they took twenty-five feet.
That was the absolute minimum.
And that was the, so they have to just take the absolute minimum.
They, yeah, they have to maintain that twenty-five feet, or whatever the planning board decides.
Right, 'cause we could, we could say...
It's up to the planning board, it's not up to the applicant, it's up to the, the applicant to ask, you can sit there and say, no, you've got too much fog, this whole area here is trending towards that swamp.
Yeah, but I could come to you and say, I want the setback instead of fifty feet, I want it to be ten, and you could say, no, because the absolute minimum is really twenty-five, and so that's what you have to take, or you don't get anything.
Well, the absolute minimum is fifty, you make an exception.
Well, no, no, what I'm saying is, is that when you ask for an exception, you only get the absolute minimum, there's no wiggle room. Does, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
The minimum stated in the...
No, but that's...
Yes, it is, the minimum stated in the ordinance. You can get a special exception.
But it's not in this criteria.
No, I don't have a new criteria.
Okay.
This is just a criteria for approval of that special exception.
Okay.
So the applicant knows what they have to do, they just don't really, really, really come and say, okay, well, because, because I want, I want to do fifty, I want to do twenty-five.
But then the question becomes, do you want all five of these conditions, are you willing to accept four out of five, or three out of five?
That's the question.
I, I think, um, four out of five is reasonable, there's not, not many times would be a very poor, so that's fair. But the others should be met.
I think the first one should be met automatically.
Automatically, there's no other...
That's sort of the hardship.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the hardship issue.
Right.
Exactly, that's exactly what it is. You have an existing law.
And I like two, because it's, that means it's not connected to a larger waterway.
Exactly.
So that's what we discussed about it, you know, exceeding, what, what did you say, ten acres?
Yeah.
Something like that.
Well, yeah, in this particular case, it was a shoreline overlay district, so it was between two and ten acres, and the issue is if it's, you can get it, shoreline overlay, you know, district, that's wetland that's two acres, but it's isolated.
Right.
It might be a little riv, rivaled, going, it's not a piece of a larger wetland.
Right.
It's not, it's not separated by just a, you know, small bank, it's really part, hydraulically part of that wetland.
So one and two are necessities, I think, for sure. That the wetlands is basically isolated and not connected to a larger, more important wetlands that may be off the property, which is what you looked at when you went to the Zoo property.
See, I'm, I'm thinking that all five of these criteria should be met.
Four would be difficult in all situations, the thing that made the Zoo property interesting was because it did meet that, that you noticed the upland actually pitched away from that upland, that torso.
Okay.
So, the wetland really wasn't, the, the twenty-five foot wasn't going to really do much in the way of, um...
Well, the, the...
Filtering the water, because it was going the opposite direction.
The fifty-foot setback is there for a reason.
Yeah.
Now, in, in this case, there, there would have been a valid reason to say, okay, because this is pitched the other way, then we, we can go lower.
Right, and we did, we discussed it, yes.
But if it was pitched in the same direction, well, they couldn't get the exception, I don't think they should, they would meet the exception, so that's why I'm saying all five of these, you should meet all five of these criteria. you should meet all five of these criteria. Because otherwise you could meet four of these and it could be a vernal pool. Well, you met four out of the five.
Yeah. And I, when I said, what I said, I was thinking exactly. I was, I was looking at it deoxically. So I, I see what, I agree with you with, you know, five.
I think, um, I do think that it should be noted as a significant vernal pool. Because that's what's, how it's regulated at the state level.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So insert the word significant?
Yeah, it should be significant. And, and the reason, and the reason why is because as you, I recall this board being quite upset about what happened over at, um,
Storage?
The storage facilities. Where they dealt actually in that twenty-five, in that twenty-five percent up to the edge of that, that vernal pool.
I would say just any vernal pool that's designated as a vernal pool, that you should stay fifty feet away from that.
How about a man-made one?
That, that's a very...
That wouldn't be a vernal, well, wouldn't be a vernal pool.
Oh, didn't we, didn't, uh...
Give me an ACOE vernal pool.
Yeah.
Army Corps of Engineers. It would have to be a state significant vernal pool, not an ACOE. You know, or ACOE, I don't know what to say.
So do you wanna put the word significant in or no?
I'd say...
Name a significant pool as classified by the...
Okay, so then let's start that.
Okay.
It still could be man-made significant.
Yeah.
They usually don't consider, they don't consider man-made ones that often. I was out with, with Julian and, and we were out on a road and, you know, there's a drainage ditch in the side of the road that was being worked on and there were so many clusters of salmonella or eggs. It was at the right time and they were there and we both looked at each other and we said, really? And he went, no, I'm not, army corps. So, uh, I said, I, no, don't worry about it. Because that was a man-made ditch that had that in it. And it was being used for the purposes of, of, uh...
Procreation by salamanders.
Well, it was drained. I was trying to actually bring it up.
Quite a project.
The calculus of whether it's man-made or not.
They were squatters in my drainage ditch.
Whether it's man-made or not, I think, um, if it is determined to be a vernal pool, man-made, maybe it could be different, but, but if it is a vernal pool, it is a sensitive area, more sensitive than, than most wetlands. And I think fifty feet isn't all that much to ask to be away from a sensitive wetland.
My, my issue is that you can have a very, very small vernal pool. There can be a pocket in the woods
Yep.
that's called a vernal pool. And somebody, you know, a, a adamant neighbor that's opposed to something will come out and make sure you're aware of that.
I think you're seeing that.
Are there, are there more than two categories? It's just vernal pool or significant vernal pool, and that's it?
The regulator, at the state level, significant is what's regulated.
Right.
By the D.
Right.
But significant is defined by one of five particular organisms in it, so it's very, very narrow, my understanding.
Well, it's very specific of, of what needs to meet the criteria to be as significant.
So you can still have a vernal pool, but if it doesn't have fairy shrimp or moose alamanders, it's not technically a significant.
Right, right.
So, and then I'm not sure it was narrow.
See, I, I think we wouldn't want it to be that narrow because I'm, I'm, what do you do with it? The guy comes along, you've got a vernal pool, you can step over.
Right.
You know? I was gonna tell them that they can't build because you, you can take a two-foot step and clear the whole pool.
I thought, and I may be wrong, and I, I don't know, I had a class in it a year ago. But I thought if it was man-made or from an ATV or something like that, it technically isn't defined as a vernal pool, no matter what's in it.
Correct.
Well, also, there is some stipulation, because I came across this when I was building the house, that it was dug and non-ma- and man-made, but if it was dug before a certain date, it precluded, uh, its designation as a vernal pool and you could fill it in regardless of what was in there. And I'll have to go look that up because Chris Popey sent me the thing. And thank goodness, A, it wasn't a vernal pool, and B, it was dug back in the seventies.
Yep.
So it predated the ordinance, so...
So I'm just thinking that it being significant would be the criteria.
I agree, so...
And I, I mean, I've dealt with the opposite, it sounds like, in that there's something that there was testimony that it was dug many years ago, but it's been so grown in that it's really not obvious that it is. And the regulatory agencies have said, no, you know, we're not seeing anything definitive here that, that this was dug and it's not natural, so we're gonna classify it as a significant.
There is a crazy cutoff date, and I'll go look and see what it is.
Yeah, it could be.
Yeah, so...
Again, I, I think for our discussion, significant needs to be in.
Okay, so, and then, so why don't we do all five? Moving right along.
That works, that works.
I was so moved.
Motion's been made as there were second. Or else like this.
Oh, I thought I made the motion.
Oh, no, I didn't know I did have it.
Oh, well, I'll second it then.
Lance made a motion.
And I'll second it.
Susan seconded.
Sorry about that, Lance.
Any, any other discussion?
Kill us five.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. We need a public hearing. Because that's a change of land. Okay, at this point, in, in deference to the fine folks from ACT that have shown up, we're going to move item one under other ordinance plans, open space plan. A discussion of working with the Rundle Conservation Trust to formulate a comprehensive open space plan for a rundle. Guys, we need your help.
So what does this mean?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know. I'm just sorry I'm agenda.
Since this is not a, like, an official project from them, can I stay and live discussing member?
Yeah, because it's, it's, this is just a discussion. There's no votes.
No, I just wanna make sure. No, I mean, I recuse myself for you guys have come before me, before us.
I think it's just an open discussion.
This is just an open discussion to get, so that we can get something started and we can get working on this.
That's correct.
But we didn't, you understand, we didn't come in and, I just got the notice, looked at the agenda and saw, we...
The agenda, you're saying, that's us.
We ought to be there.
Joe called me and said, hey, come on down.
Okay, Jamie, so what does this mean?
I don't know. First I've heard of it.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
One thing that the town, I've had to go through several state agencies recently to do an inventory of what the town's resources and studies have been. And, uh, one of the things that I've known for a while, and I think I've mentioned it to a few of you in the past, uh, has been that we don't have an open space plan, even though our comp plan and the town's surveys indicate that maintaining open space, retaining open space, building in a plan for retaining open space is of highest priority to the citizens. And, you know, we have no tools, we have no mechanisms, we don't even, I have a good identification of what's out there. And all towns usually, as part of a comprehensive plan, usually develop an open space plan. And, um, usually they get a consultant to help them with it because there's a lot of mapping, there's a lot of inventory, there's a lot of work desk, you've got meetings, there's public hearings, there's all this fun stuff that we have to do. And usually it becomes either a standalone ordinance or it becomes an attachment to, not a, to me, a standalone plan or attaches to the, uh, to the comprehensive plan. And it's used as a guide for both comprehensive planning purposes. It's used as a guide for the planning board. Uh, and it's used as, as a guide, obviously, for community organizations like ACT who are going to be partners in this whole process. And it's an opportunity really for the planning board to work with another citizen group, form a working group to actually do this plan, to do an open space plan for the community. You would wanna probably take it to a town meeting, get it adopted by the town, um, and get it codified as part of the comp plan. And then the planning board can use the recommendations of that in adjusting their ordinances and their regulations in order to accomplish the goals of the open space plan. Often there's a real disconnect there. And, um, what often happens is we have a separate committee, like a conservation committee or ACT who does it by themselves, and there's a disconnect in the planning board. Uh, I would propose that there be a working group that would consist of representatives from the planning board and, and the ACT and representatives maybe from the comp plan.
Yeah, because I was thinking that the comp plans, you know, because they, they're gonna end up, if they ever decide to rewrite a comp plan, they're gonna end up addressing the issue.
Well, it's gonna be a big issue because I think the state's gonna reenact the OCP, the, you know, Office of Comprehensive Planning, and will start reinforcing its, its old regulations on comprehensive planning in the state, which is no longer advisory, it would be required mandatory. And there are provisions that you have to do, like, there's certain things you have to do. One of which is inventory. We haven't done an inventory. We haven't financed it, but we haven't done an inventory of, of resources since two thousand. Not good. Things have changed the last time. So, um, that's what I would recommend to the board and to ACT, is that we have a joint committee. And I would be happy to work with staff that do it.
Can I ask a, a dumb question?
Sure.
An inventory of resources. Are we talking about land, uh, just land owned by the town or is this something else?
No, this goes beyond...
What do you mean by resources?
Well, resources would be, uh, open space resources. It would be, it involved, actually, a lot of mapping, a lot of inventory in terms of what do we have for open space in the town right now? What do you have for undeveloped land right now?
Whether it's privately or publicly held.
Whether it's privately or publicly held. You know, what is, what is, what is land that we have open? Then what is land that has value?
What does open mean?
Undeveloped.
Okay, so, just without?
Without houses or businesses or...
Forests, fields.
Paddocks?
Yeah, fields, if, and forests, and swamps, and forests. You would identify national resource stuff, yeah. Yeah, you would. You would identify it by different types of uses, absolutely.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
You've seen these sort of plans before, I take it. What is the purpose? What is, what is the objective of creating an open space plan? What do, what are people, and I say people, I mean towns, what are they trying to do?
What they're trying to do is because everybody wants to preserve open space, they try to build the regulations around preservation of open space concept. But more importantly, specifically, if we wanna start having corridors, say, open space corridors throughout a community, if we decide as a community we wanna do this, then we gotta have a plan of how to do that. Now, part of that would be, okay, um, we can do it by, by mandate. Now, that probably won't fly very well in the town of Oregon. It flies better than certain other states. Like, if we were in Oregon, we wouldn't have a problem with this, but we aren't. We're in Maine. So it would involve, um, it would involve trying to achieve, to build these corridors, to get people to participate in them, to, for the planning board to recognize certain areas that the open space plan identifies as being very valuable. You're actually gonna come up with a hierarchy of what's really, really valuable land and what's not so valuable, where developers could go, where we really need to preserve certain open spaces. And then the planning board, when they're looking at subdivisions, when they're looking at site plans, they, they use this as part of their criteria in design on those pieces of land. Saying, okay, well, uh, we'd like you to preserve a corridor here, and how are we gonna get you to do that? We gonna do it by mandate again, or are we gonna give you maybe some density bonuses? Or are we gonna give you something in exchange? We're gonna get some, uh, point per quote. Yes, I love your opinion.
For example, you just gave, and it would seem to me the objective in that example is to preserve the ability of wildlife to move around the town.
Really, that's the driving force behind it.
Yeah. Are there other... That would be one of many driving forces. Part of it would be wildlife preservation. Deer yards. I mean, what, what are we gonna find? We're gonna find, where are the new deer yards now? Deer yards are at the same place they were ten years ago. DEPQs or IFWQs, a, a rolling map of where deer yards are. Natural, uh, natural critical areas mapping, which as you know is super secret. You're supposed to know where they are, although, you know, if you twist some of these arm up to the program, they'll tell you where they are. But there's, there's important areas of important natural resources. A good example, I twisted the arm when I was in Old Orchard Beach and found out there was a stand of, of, um, black tupuloes in Old Orchard Beach, right downtown, in a swamp. And it was identified by the state as being a critical area of this, this isaticus don't grow up this way very often. So it was at the northernmost range of the stand. It was important to preserve that. So we have things like that we're really unaware of because we don't tap into those resources that the state has.
From a planning board point of view, one of the things that, that having that kind of information would help with when we do subdivisions, we require clustered subdivisions to create that open space. If we, if we don't know that black tupuloes are growing somewhere, we have no idea what a black tupelo is, by the way. If we don't know that they're growing someplace, we don't know, we don't have enough information to say, we have to restrict this particular area, and you just can't build that.
I hear you.
So if you have, as someone who owns a decent-sized piece of property that they wanna develop, and so would they have to have that property assessed before? I mean, I don't mean assessed financially, monetarily, but whether or not there were areas within that large, larger plot of land that might be restricted from development? So would that be a requirement of getting a permit? And my second part of the question is, if the area around this big piece of property is highly developed or developed enough, would the person who owns the big piece of property be restricted from developing, developing it and over, overdeveloping the area? In other words, would density and restrictions on density limit what that raw land owner could do with his property?
That would be something. That's the implementation of the open space plan by the regulators, which we can do. Would you could come up with programs in order to restrict, develop it, and maybe in some cases, I believe, the current methodology.
I was about to say incentives.
Yeah, because I, I get away from the takings issue.
Yeah, I don't wanna get into the takes, but what I like is the incentives issue. We'll give you density over here. If you leave this space here, we'll give you more density over here.
Yeah.
If you can get the soils, that's always the issue in this town. You get the soils, we'll give you, we'll give you double density. We'll give you one, three more lots over here. So there's a good, there's a good incentive. Incentive zoning is the way that you're going to get these plans to work.
So that would have to be codified?
It'd have to be codified. So that's where the partnership between the two groups has gotta come. Because, you know, you're gonna work together to create the plan. And at the same time, you're gonna start getting the townspeople to start going along with it. So these people are very effective at doing that.
What?
We're not so effective at that, but you folks are effective at that.
So if there was a vision of having a trail system that went through, through the town that you could access from one end to the other, and it went through some of these, and maybe they, they landowner would, would give us amazement or would work, and it'd be, you know, and we're talking about eight feet of it or something, whatever.
Right, it's like the riding trails in Westchester County and things like that.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, Kenebunport has their vision, if you will, to connect the town to the sea. That's what their trails do. They're all built around that vision. Is that, is that fairly correct? You were there, you know what it is.
Yeah, essentially, we want a green way through, so that you can walk from one end of town to the ocean. And we pretty much have it at this point.
It would be nice if we could figure out somebody to connect onto that.
So I would, I was part of a grant, um, being kind of wearing two hats at ACT and KCT where we worked, and DOT was part of this too. We worked on creating a plan to try and connect the eastern trail to the ocean. And they wanted, they were like, how can we work with a rundle and KCT to eventually get that, the eastern trail to connect all the way through Kenebunport to get people to the ocean? So it's kind of a, you know, we came up with lots of different ways we can do it. Obviously, we...
Yeah, we have railroad tracks.
We didn't talk to anybody, but, I mean, like, there's, I, there are ways to do it. And I think, um, my personal opinion, what I would love to see the planning board thinking about is ways that people can get around our town without necessarily having to drive. I think that's gonna be more and more important as we go forward. I'm coming from a client one-on-one talk, so that's what I came from. But if we have more safe passageways for people and bikes and kids and whatever to walk and bike, I think that's a really, um, towns that are walkable, towns that are bikable are really desirable places to be. And that improves everything in your system. So things like that are something you guys can think about. And that's an incentive thing, too. Like, if a contractor comes to you and they have fifty acres they wanna build on, you can say, hey, can we preserve this little corridor right here because we can connect this one with this one and get to here? You know, if you have that vision, then you have those pathways for everybody in the town to use.
But you're right, it has to be incentivized.
Yes.
No, there's no strong armor, no...
Oh, no, I totally agree with that. And that it becomes, um, kind of a clear fucking big pile of it, so we have to do that one. So, we would need to see, we would need to see what your, what your vision and how things are either being accessed and where those trails are going and where you hope for them to go.
Well, that's the interesting-
So, we can look at what's happening here and try to-
Oh, we haven't finished ours. We're just starting. We're only still a couple, I mean-
Yeah, we're two years old. That's where I go.
We haven't even been, you know, one of the towers.
Incorporated yet. And we're working on three pieces of property, but we're always got the, the-
I mean, we talk about preserving the unique rural character of the town. That's one of our core, core values. What does that mean in real life? Every farm has to be saved? Is it the vistas that need to be kept open somewhere, that people like to drive through and see the spaces and the openness? I don't know. I don't know how you do it.
We've talked about that, about towns creating setbacks so that at least visually from the street, the, the areas maintained its character. I mean, I came from an area that was highly developed in Los Angeles, but it was done at the turn of the last century. And so, they had a historic overlay zone, which didn't restrict you from updating your home, but the facade and the setbacks had to remain consistent. You couldn't put up fences and things like that, so that the vistas of looking down, the streets remained the same. And so, basically, the neighborhood kept its character. But still, the houses were updated and expanded and whatever. But at least visually, going through the neighborhood, it looked, it looked harmonious and consistent. And I think a little bit of that would help Arundel, because the development is such that you see these clusters, I know where we have cluster housing, but these little communities of like five and six houses that are popping up all over the place, and there, there doesn't seem to be an overall concept of how we want the town and all of the connecting towns to look. And that's where the rural character is lost. And it isn't a lot to maintain, you know, the, the visual, uh, look of a town from the roadways. It wouldn't be a hardship for most developers to do that, where you could enter a development, but at least from the street, it still looks like it belongs where it is. So, you know.
I think that's an important part.
So, that's all part of the plan that we wanna work with you, but we have no idea how to do that.
Get you to wait.
So, we could, so we could all work together.
Well, you're gonna have to do it sooner than later, because, you know, development is, is happening at such a quick pace that-
But nobody has, we don't have the book, nor do you, so we have to try.
Right, so, but there is some urgency, I think, in getting it done.
So, I have a question.
We're all by design.
Would you plan on approaching landowners, or just wait till they're ready to develop? And then we'll come and talk.
Don't do this anymore.
Really? Yeah.
Encourage.
There's a lot of-
A little bit.
That's a fine art. I mean, very often, if it's a large piece of land, the property owner, you may need to develop relationships with the people that are buying it, or the family members, or whatever, so they know you're there, but your roles are not that.
So, you, you plan on doing that well ahead of time, before they need to sell?
It's a relationship.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes these are fifty, yeah, long things that you're working with, with someone or a family, that sees it, and it tends to be sort of a community is, you know, grows into it and aligning, but.
Nor also, I think we need help with is, we have the requirement with subdevelopments to cluster. And, and that requires them to set aside open, open space, but, right, so with the work-
But the open space could be a little slither in the back, and it's from the east.
A lot of times, they're just, they're just little things that work around the driveways and they're there, open space, twenty-five feet wide.
So, when you have a map, though, of where all those open spaces are, because when we started looking, it was town land easement, it was all the open spaces that were provided by subdivisions that were gonna get us from the eastern trail all the way to the trails in Kenny Bonport.
And I was mentioning for Donna, if those subdivisions are in place, you'd have an HOA that is in charge of them. Approach the HOA about giving you an easement, you can get a tax deduction for it and done soon.
And I mean, so I think there's part of that, and I think with builders, if you already know where all of those pieces are, and you look at your map when that subdivision comes in, you're like, oh, hey, look, this little piece lines up. If you move this over to this side, provided the soils are good and everything, you know, and you give us this easement that provides this corridor.
And that, that's where we would be able to work together.
Yeah.
And that's a selling point for the builders.
It is.
Very, very much so. You see it all the time, adjacent to a conservation land.
Or adjacent to a trail.
A trail.
We have, we had, the eastern trail had to, Eastern Trail Management District had to, had to basically copyright the name of the eastern trail, because we've started to use the subdivisions in Old Orchard Beach and you have the Saco, so we asked, you had to do that. And then we said, okay, you want the name? Name rights. It'll cost you. But that's one of the things you have to do.
Of the eastern trail, um, that, yeah, you were on that, I forgot you were on that, right?
He was over.
So, so, um, who was it? It's not Keith Fletcher. Who was it that we've been dealing with? No, it was, um, it was the guy that we went through.
You told me.
No, 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 the guy that you and I went through with the, with the, um, grant. His name is, is capable, right now.
Paul? Schumacher?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so we went through with Paul, like, getting those plans that they have. I think having that just for your reference, for the town's reference, but the other thing too, and I know this opens a can of worms, but it's important to know what the town is looking for. When, I mean, all of us in this room are sitting here going, well, I don't know what the town wants for open space. Well, maybe that's a question that needs to be answered. And maybe that's a question that can be asked in a survey, or maybe it's a question that can be asked in forums. But that was one thing that I am always very, um, high on, is that you, you, you talk to communities before you start planning, 'cause I think that's really important. Because your vision of open space might be totally different than mine. Yours might be totally different than Sam's. Like, automatically, I go to wildlife corridors and walking places. That might not be what everyone else goes to.
I go to businesses and farms.
Right, so I-
I was saying on that, too. I'm looking at it from a visual standpoint.
Right, and I look at it for functionality.
Well, we'd rather get people out of the cars, looking at it and on their walkin', biking or wheelchair.
And that's, you know, that's one of the things that this board had a, had a problem, and the campaign committee had a problem, too, because we've heard this over and over again. We've had multiple surveys, even the consult we had from Baltimore, saying, yeah, rural character is the most important thing. So, okay, how do we define rural characters?
Exactly.
And that's when things get really tight. And you remember, Donna, we, we, we had everybody, we had a small committee that went out and said, okay, take ten pictures of what you think rural character is. All over the place. It was all over the place.
It's all over the map.
It was all over the map. I said, okay, well, what we, what we will have to do is, if we really wanna start really getting into this, we have community workshops. You start getting buy-in from the community. Instead, what we have a tendency of doing is coming up with regulations. We get buy-in from the community, like, what, what is it, what's sacred about this place? What exactly is sacred? We might have to add preferences. We might have to take photographs and do preference, you know, just basic preference.
I had a sense, I'm really am on in this sense, but I had a sense, and it was evidenced by the vote, the question, the vote on the town school, town hall, the authorization to go ahead with the town hall building. I mean, there is an amazing result, I think, to have that churn out, to look at the faces in the ground, and to have that kind of whole-
And no one's gonna say a word.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I, for me, I think, you know, we're, I think we may be at a lot of time right now when engaging the townspeople in workshops and, and, and idea sessions about what is rural character? Why is this town attractive? Why do you live here? You know, that sort of stuff. And the answer's all over the place. But maybe it could be distilled into something that will be useful both to you and to us. And we could, we're gonna create our magic mask, you know, of what, what we're looking for.
That could be part of the work group that we wanna put together. Where, where the work group could, could host that meeting and get that information from the town. It would be similar to, the survey would be similar to what we did when we made decisions about marijuana. We surveyed every registered landowner in town and found out what they thought. And it was over, well, two-thirds of the people.
Really?
We had six hundred results, over four hundred people said, we don't want it, period. Any, any way, shape, or form. You know, and they returned the ballots, which was really surprising.
Yeah, 'cause we didn't do it postpaid return.
No, they didn't. We sent it out with the property tax bills, and they, they came back in and dropped them all off. But if you've ever done a survey, if you get five percent, that's really good.
Five percent, you're doing good, yeah.
So, conveniently enough, um, I've just been funded starting an initiative, um, a climate initiative in Kenny Bonport, well, it's gonna be nationwide, but, um, part of the workshop we created is a community mapping piece. And it's all about communication and what places are special to you, and you put them on the map, and you, it's a whole workshop piece. And as I work that out, I'll be more than happy to bring that here.
I like that. Determining sacred places is extremely important.
You can. Chip swam.
It's not the Arundel Swamp.
It's the Great Arundel.
It's the Great Arundel. It's only special to you.
Where's the Great Arundel Swamp? It's on the Kenny Bonport Land Trust property, it's not on mine. The map has it wrong.
This was about in the sixties.
Where is it?
No, it's all-
It's on Chip's land.
Yeah, Kenny Bonport, it's the Land Trust one.
Not my land.
It extends, it extends from the river, actually, it's, uh, up-
North River Road, right?
Well, it goes, no, it goes that way, actually, parallel to Center Road. Goes up in that, that area out there, too.
If you guys can work on getting a couple of people to work on getting a couple of people here. A couple of, a couple of base of their map plan, and maybe we, maybe we can find a couple of just regular citizens to get involved. About, that would probably be the max, eight to ten would be the max.
Well, we'd be, we'd be pleased to be, be part of that.
We tried to do that with a couple of other things, and it got overwhelming.
The recognition of a nascent work.
I would respectfully request that Ms. Caution about illegal takings be paid attention to.
Well, we're not taking anything. We are not-
No takings.
No takings at all.
Maybe giving, but no, no takings.
There are takings and there are takings. And I, I think that, that the idea of offering incentives is critically important.
No question.
Any, any action by fiat-
No, this is not an imminent.
No, there won't be any more.
And the, the other thing I want to point out, uh, one that I wanted to make to Susan is, um, you and I have talked about cluster housing, uh, back, not in a formal setting. If, if you said there's no, there's no cost, I wanna make clear that today, building a road is approximately three hundred, three hundred and fifty dollars a foot.
Did I say no cost? That what was the question?
More hardship. So, requiring a hundred feet of additional road could be a very considerable hardship, or at least a very considerable cost.
And perhaps that's part of the incentive? I mean, I, I think, you know, you have to figure that stuff out. No, I get that, that those are hard costs. To move your road over and make it, you know, a hundred feet longer in order to accommodate the trail is a hard cost to the person doing the road. I get that. So, um, and if I said it wasn't a hard, not necessarily a hardship, I didn't mean it that way, but point well taken. So.
Make clear that, 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 that there, there is a cost.
There's also cost shift from, from the standards that are used in, uh, for road design are usually overdesigned. Not necessarily the depth of gravel itself, but turning radiuses, tangents between reverse curves. Jamie would probably agree with me on that. A lot of character that you get, rural character, comes from not having the more modern, current turning radius is a three hundred feet or two hundred fifty. You can go down to a hundred and fifty feet, I still can get a fire engine through. And I still can get more rural character by having a twisty turning road that slows down people.
As an example, the, the, the one thing that I advocated on the amendments to the street road ordinance was removing the requirement that we go down the center line. And it may seem like a, a, a small thing, but you can look at, you could look at the Chip K Lang versus Paddle Lang. One of them goes straight down the middle of, uh, straight right away, and the other one kind of hinders a little bit.
You could do that with the design of the right away. The right away doesn't have to, have to have four hundred foot radii on it. It can have a hundred and fifty foot radii, probably a hundred.
So, you would tie it, take to get this up and running?
Probably right after the first thing here.
Probably first.
First of the year?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're clear, yeah, we're-
Yeah, what I'm doing, we have, we have one more meeting this year. We're not doing anything until, that's all happened.
Getting some electronic stuff, using drones, we have some mapping, area mapping, and GIS mapping.
There's tons of GIS stuff the vans blow at your fingertips.
I'll work on some of that on the R mass, on the R.
Okay, so, thank you very much.
We love it.
I'll get in touch with Joan after the first thing here. We'll get started on Sunday.
You're a, you're a volunteer, were you saying? Are you a hundred percent nominated, or how are you comp?
We're, we're a five oh one C, C three. We're a chapter of the Kenny Bonport Conservation Trust. Kenny Bonport. So, we're independent, we finance ourselves, we do all our own work ourselves.
It's a help.
And guys-
Our money's needs in Arundel.
You're like a money subsidiary.
You have your own board of directors.
You have a board, you're looking at the chunk of it.
Well, we have to do all our own funding, so I've got all of your names, and I'm sure you'll be first to buy a Timberdite tie ticket, which we're just setting with a, so.
It's a, it's a flag raising.
It's a great tie.
That is very good, Phil. Good tie.
We've got now most of the selectmen on the, on the field. We're beginning as an easement, are volunteering, are building the bridges. You have both Jason and Tom.
That's a good line behind.
Let's see Tom with a chainsaw, he's wicked, but.
I didn't realize what a, what a woodworker he was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's very talented.
And we did just make, uh, just a week and a half ago, uh, the connect to the eastern trail.
Yes, finally, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could get a result of that.
So, from the back of, uh, from Loomer Road, from behind with the town hall and the municipal building, uh, that, we've got one trail that will connect to the eastern trail.
So, you, when you mentioned before, you had three properties that you're working on?
Yes, there's, there's one on, just on River, River Road, just off of Durrell Bridge Road. It's, it was dedicated, what, what they did?
Well, we had the grand opening on the twenty-fourth.
It's a trail that goes down to the river. There are benches on the river, they were built by the Boy Scouts.
You, you guys approved the parking space?
Yeah.
You approved the parking space for three cars?
Yeah, they had them down there.
And then there's a forty-seven acres on, off, off Center Roads. It's with cloth sole land just off of Center Road.
Yeah, and it's right across-
Sorry, where is it?
Across from McChipway, that.
Wow, that's, no, I didn't know about that.
Forty-seven on the side of Center Roads. Thirty-seven acres.
It was donated to the Kenny Bonport Conservation Trust, but Tom believes in letting Arundel It was donated to the Kenny Blunkport Conservation Trust, but Tom believes in letting Arundel people have their own land, so he handed it over to us.
Terrific, great.
It's beautiful.
Beautiful.
What, what, what is it? Is it field and?
Fields and forest.
Well, actually it's field and water.
On the east side of Senate? On the east side of Senate?
It's mostly field and then it's got this stream that goes Goff's Brook is right along the side of that.
Excellent.
And the third one is, is.
We bought together with the town.
Bought it with the town.
So they've been busy.
Um, for, for two years.
I was going to say for.
Center for this planning board.
Okay.
And for the meeting. And thank you for your efforts. Well, now the real fun, we're gonna have some fun here too.
Now we'll have some fun.
Thank you.
Moving on, gentlemen. Thank you very much. You guys are welcome to come anytime you want. And find out what's going on, cause you may, you may show up and they'll maybe.
I have an in. I hear about what's going on every now and then. I have an in.
No.
So that's.
There's a lot of.
Yeah, that's, that would be a, that would be a good announcement to you guys.
Do you have a copy?
I have to talk about some, uh, funding, maybe some grants.
Yeah, there could be something. And I said, Randall, why don't you sign up for me? You did, but you're gonna say to Tad.
Joan, I have it. Oh, thank you.
The next item we got to look at, the amendment to the citizen petition.
All right, this is, this will probably be a little bit controversial, but, um, the board asked me to, um, make up some ideas on, on building citizen petitions.
Now, in all fairness, when Tad says the board, I ask, because I'm upset with the citizen, with the petition process, because you can collect signatures and nobody knows what they're signing.
Yeah, I was gonna add.
It's not on file anywhere. It doesn't, it's, I got upset about that. If it's a state petition, I have to, I have to be able to read it and know what I'm signing in agreement with beforehand.
And there should be a window on how long you have to get the signatures and, I don't know, there should be some parameters.
Well, basically what I did is I followed state law, what the state does. Uh, no, a point. Uh, actually substituted to the Secretary of State, we substituted the town attorney. And essentially the idea here is to have the petitioner do what they're supposed to do right now is they gave, they have to be a registered voter for Arundel. They submit an application to the town clerk specifying the full text of the proposed ordinance or ordinance revision. And the application must contain five names and addresses and signature, uh, the names and addresses, the signatures of five voters. That will be, in addition to the applicant, are destined to receive notices regarding the processing of the application. And the voter, the, uh, the voter submitting the application signs in to President Leclerc. And then it's referred to the town attorney within ten days. And the town attorney reviews it, uh, the proposed ordinance language and citations, uh, to make sure it's coherent, it's complying with federal and state law and it's compatible with other related ordinances and laws of the town of Arundel. And it's, it meets the numbering criteria, which we've had a problem before. And the town attorney, and the town attorney's criteria for reviewing is there. And then the town attorney's gotta get back, um, with their comments within fifteen days.
That's a short.
It's a short.
That's a short one though.
It is a short one, yeah.
And how long do they have to collect signatures?
Six months.
Six months.
Hundred and eighty days.
Hundred and eighty days.
And is that a standard?
State is one year, one year. So it's half a year.
I was gonna say ninety days.
Yeah, that's, that might be a little tough.
That's a hard thing.
A half a year is a, is a good point. State is one year and you figure the state's covering the entire state. So.
Oh, the state is, so the state's three sixty five, you adjusted.
And you can get an extension to eighteen months depending on the nature of the complexity and nature. The standard is usually a year. So I just shortened it there, cause you folks had said, well, it shouldn't go on forever, cause the planning board should know, the town should know. If there's something coming up that might affect other legislation, you want to know at a time and fashion. So a hundred and eighty days would be, and then it follows the same procedure, you know? The clerk, you know, clerk assigns the forms that go out, you know, to make sure that they're not, they haven't modified. It's got the legislation on it and they bring it back and, uh, after a hundred, within a hundred and eighty days. And the, it's the ten percent of the registered voters in the town based on the latest gubernatorial election. And town clerk verifies the signatures and then it's submitted to the, the selectmen and then to the, uh, to the town clerk, so it verifies the board of selectmen and gives the planning board for the requisite public hearing. And it goes on, it's for consideration in the next town meeting. That tech next town meeting is another selection call.
And I have a quick question for you.
Sure.
And then from the town meeting, how long do they have to pursue your permit? I mean, can, can we, we've gone, one case I'm thinking about, so we went through this whole thing and they got a permit and it got certified, blah, blah, blah. The town hall voted, it was contentious, but it got passed and that has taken place. And there's a lot of dust between when that happened and where we are now and can it be an indefinite period of time?
Yes.
For that person to come.
It's not, it's not project specific, even though that was project specific. But it's an ordinance change, so it is the law of the land.
So they don't have to pursue a permit after going through all that, but.
No, they could, they could decide for whatever reason.
But this is the new law of the land.
But the person who requires the, you know, who asked for the town meeting and the ordinance change and whatever, they pay for that process. And does that actually take place?
Oh, I can't say.
Okay, cause we don't really actually know whether or not we make the purchase.
This actually, this whole process is really handled by the town clerk's office. And, um, the board has nothing to do, the only thing the planning board's going to have anything to do with on this is to hold the requisite public hearing that the state requires and the town requires before it goes to a, to the legislative body, which is the town.
It really turns on, it's just, it's ministerial action by the court, by the clerk and then it's the lawyers.
Yes.
It's the town lawyers.
Town lawyer's making sure that it, that it's, it's not, it, it, it isn't crazy. It's coherent. Also that, that, that it, it just doesn't make a statement that there's actually a duty to act on the part of the regulatory.
So does that involve, does it contemplate editing? I mean, is that an edit function or is it kind of?
It's an edit function for coherence and for comply, and coherence within the ordinance. And that it's not directly, uh, it, it, it doesn't directly contradict a town or a state or a federal law. Like saying, well, okay, we're gonna have cocaine growers here. Okay, we're gonna have a problem with that from federal law or state law. Or, you know, you don't need to have handicap access into these kind of buildings and, I'm sorry, that's a federal law. Same thing with life safety one on one, you know? You, you don't have to have separation between, you know, residents and an, and an auto shop, you know, that part is separate. Sorry, state, that's a federal law, a state law.
And if it's self-contradictory?
That's what the attorney informs and the attorney informs them is self-contradictory. Is I know most attorneys will recommend a language that makes it no longer self-contradictory.
Partly, it would be striking, offending language, injecting clarifying language. So I would not think the, it would be otherwise incumbent on the lawyers to start building, building in omitting provisions.
But that's not the town attorney, it would be the applicant who.
Who would be well advised to get his own counsel.
Right.
Get their own counsel.
Unlike the, we've had experience with.
What do they say about people who represent themselves?
Yeah.
May I make a comment through the chair?
Sure.
I, I understand wanting to have a defined period for the petition. I think Tad's thinking about, well, the state has an entire state to cover in a year. The state also has a great deal more resources. And I, I think that a hundred and eighty days is actually fairly narrow, you know? For someone with possibly limited resources to get that made. How many signatures is it, is the ten percent today?
Four hundred and, over four hundred.
It's not based on population, it's based on ten percent of what's the gubernatorial.
The registered voters in the election.
The gubernatorial, last gubernatorial election, so it's a really boring election, you need to go with fifty. You only have five hundred people come out.
It's ten, ten percent of the registered voters of the town, based on the last gubernatorial election. Not people that voted. How many people were registered to vote? That's what it says. It's the ten percent of the registered voters of the town.
But the people who sign the, the petitions don't have to be registered voters.
Yeah, see, that's, that's, that's right out of the existing language, based on last gubernatorial election, that's the way it's written.
But it doesn't say those.
That's what it's currently written.
But what that's.
I don't know why I'm in a language.
I, I, I'm, when I read this, to me that says, you look at how many registered voters that were in the last gubernatorial election, not the people that voted. How many registered voters were there?
State statute here, I think it's the last, it's based on the number of people who actually voted.
Ten percent of the registered voters of the town. So in other words, if you use the signature from somebody who's not a registered voter, doesn't count.
That's right.
So they have to look on the.
They have to be registered voters.
They have to look on the list to see whether or not somebody is a registered voter.
That's interesting. And it's not even a voter on issues pertaining to the town, if they happen to be just coming out for the governor's election. Then, then you get to get your petition signature to count.
Right off the bat, cause there's probably quite a few that don't vote.
I see, I don't, I'm really, I don't think that this says the number of voters. How many people were registered to vote.
No, that's not what it says.
Someone who signs.
Signed by, signed by.
By whom?
Signed by.
At least ten percent of the registered voters of the town. That's right, the registered voters of the town, not the voters.
Each of the overs.
Not the people that actually voted. It's the registered voters.
It's poorly written by whoever wrote it originally.
Cause that's, that's the way I interpret it.
Because it's actually says.
Somebody else will figure that out.
The state, the state, the state is the red, it's ten percent of the number of voters who voted in the last gubernatorial election.
That's how it's always been applied.
Yeah, that's the way it's applied in the state.
Well, the, the ambiguous word is voters, because it doesn't tell us whether they're just, they're registered to vote and they did in fact vote, or they're registered to vote and they didn't in fact vote, but they're registered.
It should say, it should say in there who voted.
Sim will tell you what's the number of registered voters, cause I asked her.
The intent, we should change.
It's not the number of people that voted. People that voted, we had what, six hundred people?
So that'd be sixty.
But, but we're looking at over four hundred.
Well, you could, if you do it that way, then you wouldn't do it based on the late, late gubernatorial election. You would take that out and say it's based on the ten percent of the registered voters of the town at that turn.
The, the time period that they're looking at was the last gubernatorial election. So the last gubernatorial election.
I think that's.
You're tying it to a specific date and point in time.
Right, as to who was registered to vote, not whether they voted or not, who was registered on that day. That's, that's the way I read it. I could be wrong.
Well, that's not the way the state does it. They do it based on the number of voters, who voted.
You know what?
And that might not be a great idea.
Cause Sim, Sim is interpreting that differently.
I'll bet that, I'll bet that provision's gonna be.
I have to ask the town clerk.
I bet this has been construed before by the superior court.
And even misconstrued.
Well, with the superior court, this is a law court, you think?
I'm sure, my staff.
Oh, I bet you something like this did, somebody's trying to negate a petition. I guarantee you, I mean, as non-lawyer, we're going some, some point of court.
Oh, I pulled it right off the, the website, so, but I pulled mine off the website, but this is from the town ordinance. And that I didn't, I saw the reference to it, but I didn't carefully look at the language. It's in the statutes.
You need to decide which one.
You also have to decide which one you guys want to do. I mean, ten percent of who voted in the last gubernatorial election might have been, as you say, six hundred voters who came out from that and it's only sixty. It should be, it should be a reference, a good representative group of the town to do that legislation, to do any kind of legislation like that. That doesn't really have the support of, of, of the planning board or the board of selectmen in some cases. So the petition is to override the existing authorities.
Yeah, if this, if this is out of the ordinance, then Sim is saying that it, cause it's four hundred and some odd people, I asked about it.
Four hundred and some odd people who voted in the last election.
No, the number of signatures you need. It's the number of people that were registered to vote.
Registered voters, because. Four thousand. It can't, we don't have four thousand voters in this town.
Just telling you what Sim told me.
We don't have four thousand voters. We have forty five hundred people in the whole town.
Yeah, something like that.
I know there's some kids in there.
And, well, I'm sorry, it wasn't Sim, it was Emily, because Emily was the town.
One or eighteen? Can you hear the row?
I know her population's almost forty six hundred.
Really often.
I don't know, New Chicago.
Well, you're already thought of it. You get people registered from, who moved and died.
From wanting else.
But you got, you got people living in Portland who are voting, who are registered in another state, but they attend college there and they're allowed to vote.
Yeah. That's pretty standard.
A lot of deceased people.
I just heard when I lived in, in mine with a school, did you get her?
Well, I'll check on that, okay? I think you probably want to check on the voting population at the time of the last gubernatorial election.
Yep.
That's probably what I would say. That's probably how Emily has interpreted it. But the state is who voted in the last gubernatorial election. I'll, I'll, I'll refer it to her.
Yes.
Through the chair, Mr. Officer. It could be a larger percentage of the people who voted in the total votes.
And it probably was.
Gubernatorial election.
Total votes cast, so those are actual voters. That's what this says.
Yeah.
But this is.
Right, yeah, that's the state law. Okay.
But yeah, I mean, Chip brings up a point, a good point.
Either maybe that or just having minimum, you know, the greater of X, you know, you, you guys set some number or ten percent of.
The registered voters.
Clearly anything less than a hundred is.
Right.
Right.
Not meaningful.
Yeah. Don't forget.
No, and you'll have petitions all over the place.
And, and you guys might very well decide that, that the number should, should be some integral multiple.
We may well.
As a minimum, but.
Remember, this has to go to town meeting.
I, I guess my, my, I'm sorry, my thought is that moving away from the state's starting point might not be a good idea. In other words, starting with, okay, individual registered voters who participated in the last gubernatorial election, that's, that's the, the, the number that you will start from. Just a thought.
Yeah. I want to feel best than that.
But it should be meaningful.
It should.
Should have thirty or forty.
Other than the, the discussion of how many people should be signing this petition, how do you guys feel about the rest of it? Submitting it to the town attorney, going through and making sure that it doesn't conflict with.
I would suggest. I think, I think there, there does need to be some sort of truth in advertising.
Yeah.
Because I did witness, you know, I didn't insert myself, but I did, you know, witness a dialogue at the, at the popular petition, you know, generating place in, in Arundel.
Good down?
Good down. Chancellor's station.
And, uh, you know, it was, I would, knowing a little bit about the process, I would say it was a, a, not quite a fair representation of what the, the planning board decided and what the petition was for, so.
Through, through the chair, I have another observation or a question. It would be who pays the cost of the town attorney's review?
The applicant must, the, the application must be accompanied with a fee of blank to cover the associated cost. The board of selectmen will have to set whatever that fee is going to be. But it's supposed to be enough to cover the cost.
Or you could say, she'll cover all the costs, associated costs.
Yeah, I think that would be better.
I like that idea.
Because.
I like that better too.
Attorney's review may be, depending on what the issue is, may have to be really.
Substantial.
But I would, I would then spell that out, to cover all the costs, you know?
Associated with the petitions.
Including, you know, after, you know, whatever, building rental, you know? Notice, attorney's fees, whatever else is.
Public notices, all of that.
Right. Cause you could get a petition that requires nothing and then you could get a petition that has, requires a great deal of analysis and editing on the part of the, um, town attorney and it could cost us a significant amount of money.
It could.
So, yeah, I think all associated fees, including attorney's fees, will be covered by the petitioner.
And then.
Let's make sure they collect it too.
Yeah, before it goes to town meeting.
That's right. All that has to be paid.
Check is done.
That's exactly right. I'm with you, Roger.
So would the, would the attorney review it prior to, uh, seeking petitions?
Yes.
Seeking signatures?
Yes.
Okay.
The attorney's got to prove that it meets those criteria, that's doesn't, not confusing, it's numbered properly, it doesn't violate state law, it doesn't contradict other, other ordinances or sections of ordinance. That there's, there's. And then, then they say, yeah, it does, and, or if it doesn't, they propose language and it goes back to that attorney with their proposed language changes. If the, chooses to take the attorney's suggestion or proposes their own, it's got to go back for review by the town attorney. Definitely than it has to with secretary of state.
And if it's not paid, then it doesn't go to town meeting. And then if it never gets paid, then what? There has to be some consequence because somebody.
If it, if it doesn't get paid, it doesn't go anywhere.
Right, I understand that. But you could have the attorney reviewing it and they've spent the time on it and then the person decides, oh hell, this is way too much trouble and the town attorney has spent like five hours on it and it's cost the town, I don't know, what's an hourly rate, Yens? Is it two hundred dollars an hour or a hundred and fifty dollars an hour?
Is it one fifty?
So. So one seventy-five, which is inexpensive, so it costs us a thousand dollars to have the attorney review it and then they decide, oh, I don't want to pay that, so I'm not going to bother with the petition, but we've already laid out the expense. So I think if they sign it and sign on to have it reviewed by the town and they agree to pay, then if they don't pay and we perform the services that are a part of getting this petition, you know, in order, then some, and somehow they have to pay.
That becomes, that becomes a question for the selectmen to address.
And then it becomes a collection issue.
That, that would be up to the selectmen.
But I mean.
As much as we might like to be able to say, you have to make that person pay the bill, the selectmen gets to make that decision.
I wouldn't do any work on the come, that, I mean, that basically, that's what I would say.
Then it might have to be a, a fee that's paid upfront that covers the.
A minimal amount.
You know, and then any additional, I mean, it might be the way we used to do peer review, where you had to give, give us five hundred bucks.
Yeah, or something.
Anyway, as soon as it exceeds it, you have to give us more because normally peer reviews were five hundred bucks.
And then somebody gets the bill and go, oh my God, I had no idea it could be that expensive, I don't, I'll forget it, I don't want it. And then we've already done it.
So we, we can move forward from there. We'll have some, we'll have a couple of discussions on that, I'm sure, before we get finished. Uh, the next one, shoreline zoning.
Ten percent of the votes cast along the.
Where's my shoreline zoning? So we can have a higher one.
I don't know, can we exceed the state statute on the.
I don't know, because that would make it more restrictive, wouldn't it?
Yeah, it makes it more restrictive, the states that.
I don't know who's going to vote.
This is poorly written.
Where's my shoreline zoning? It's a reduction to the shoreline zoning. And I, and I saw it, I just don't know where I put it.
Anybody need it? Shoreline zoning revisions? Yeah.
Yes. It was two pages in that.
Yeah. First on the list.
I'll take one tab, yeah. I think we got one? Thank you.
Boy, if they require me to send everything digitally, you guys are going to struggle.
I just, I couldn't, I knew I had stapled it together because it's two pages.
All right, this is to, uh, take care of that problem we encountered with Oak Ridge. And, um, I won't go into the reason why we followed the standard at the time from two, from, uh, chapter one thousand. Because, you know, as you recall, if we changed anything in the ordinance, they went in the middle of our, our mo, our format change, remember that? So we said, okay, and didn't really realize the implications of it. So the quick thing here is right now, the way it's written, it can be interpreted, you know, talk to the state shoreline zoning officer, there's one left, yes. And, and he told me basically, yeah, that means you're going to have two hundred feet of frontage. If any, any, any parcel that has shoreline zone on it, it's got to have two hundred feet of frontage on that parcel. On that, on that wetland or that whatever, you know, stream segment, whatever, and, and that, that's, that's just, that can't stand for obvious reasons. The intent of, of a shore frontage originally, as it was with shoreline zoning originally, was to protect shorelines of lakes and great ponds. And maybe significant rivers segments like the Kennebec and so forth, that people were actually subdividing for the shore frontage. And, um, I think we need to retain that. That, that was the original intent of, of chapter one thousand. And, um, so we, the one I'm proposing, we write exactly that in the shore frontage. So I identified the two things that would qualify under the state statute for that, and that would be if you were dividing, if you had shore frontage on Brimstone Pond, which is the only great, like, great pond we have in the town, we have no other great pond. The other would be on Kennebunk River. If you have shore frontage on Kennebunk River for the purpose of, you know, having a dock and all the rest of that, that you have the two hundred feet of frontage, which is what the standard, state standard is for the limited residential district. Commercial, uh, unless you, we've got a marina going in the Kennebunk River. Which is not quite a place I can find a marina. Chip, you got enough room for a marina down there? Wow.
That's a, that's a potential, yes.
That's a potential, yes, should we do it?
Well, they used to build ships there, that's why it's called the landing.
That's right. Makes sense.
Yeah.
That's true.
To be sure.
So then we just, we just leave it.
Pretty rough water there though, isn't it? Oh, no, not down, not where you.
No.
Farther down.
You had it stripped, you had it stripped and out and just leave it in. There's some potential.
Well, I would have, yeah. So leave it, so put commercial use in there.
It's already in, it's just been.
Well, I started it out because I frankly don't want to see any commercial property on Route One, any commercial property suddenly having to have two hundred feet of frontage, especially if we've got like Route One where we have a hundred foot frontage on a road, we have one acre zone.
That would go down the Pennant.
You can't get three hundred feet of frontage.
Lots.
Lots.
Okay. So it's set at three.
Get rid of it.
So it's, well, I, I looked at it and I thought, if, if we get rid of it, then we have eliminated it.
Are you on one of those river lots?
We, the ordinance specifically says that if we did not allow it, it's expressly prohibited.
Like the Panama Canal kind of lots. So they flood it and let the boats go through.
What happens if somebody successfully buys enough? That they could, they could have.
A subdivision out there?
The rec, yeah.
Then, then take it, take residential recreational off and just say shore frontage on Brimstone Pond or Kennebunk River for, you could say for recreational uses? Uh, that's limiting that too much.
I mean, I could go taking it out completely and just say, hey, you know, we just don't want it there.
What, commercial?
Yeah.
We have a commercial zone there.
But we have, but we're not going to have any frontage.
Well, there's, yeah, I guess there's no shore frontage required because it's only for residential and recreational uses. So Chip wants to put a marina in there, it's got to have a minimum two hundred foot of frontage for that, right?
Two hundred or three hundred?
Two hundred. Get rid of commercial altogether. Marina would be recreational, wouldn't it?
No.
Yeah, commercial.
Could be.
I just don't want, I don't want to stick a.
How about marine?
Use, just get rid of residential.
Very specific.
Marine.
Recreational waterways.
Marine. Make it all two hundred feet.
Commercial marine. That, that's not going to give La Piere a problem.
Yeah, I, I, I just want to hobble any of the properties along the river elsewhere. When somebody's going to divide up their property because they want to have river use, you want to make sure they have adequate frontage there, so, along the river. But I'm not sure it's really necessary because you're not really going to access it.
The, the important question is is the commercial use related to the body of water?
Yes, that's what we see. I, I think.
Point related. In, in, in other words, if the commercial use doesn't have anything to do with the body of water or others, that, that the body of water is there.
I, I'd like to s- suggest we get rid of commercial and institutional along with residential and recreational uses. Just shore frontage on Brimstone Pond and, or Kennebunk River, four hundred feet, period, regardless of use.
How many feet? Two hundred feet, okay.
Yeah, that's for a new zone, new, new lots. Yeah.
Yep, we could do that.
Why do you want to do that on the Kennebunk River north of Route One?
Same reason south of Route One.
But south of Route One, there isn't going to be any development.
Yeah.
There's nothing, there, there's no one developing.
Why, why, why as much as two hundred feet?
It's the state, it's the state standard, that's why. It was the state standard in the limited residential district. From which, which is the standard that we use for shoreline.
You don't think.
Shoreline.
You think a hundred feet is, is sufficient?
Well, originally what the state was saying is if you're building cottages around the lake, we want two hundred feet each lot. So you don't have to use all twenty-five foot, you don't have to be gay lots, basically, that's what they were saying. Now, if you develop, uh, up above north of, of Route One, or even if you subdivide south of, of the bridge of Route One, there are some large parcels there, not many, but, you know. So you, besides the one, make sure front, um, houses, nice. Accessible. Certainly for boating. Or, but. We can just get rid of the residential and recreational, or just say it's water related uses. That means if you have a, a property and you want to put a dock there, that's a water related use, you need to have a few of the frontage for that lot, whatever lot that you're going to have. Or else you get rid of it altogether, don't have shore frontage. I'm not worried about Brimstone because it's.
Five foot deep.
With the point is that somebody can carve it up. It's just, it's, it's, it's slowly shrinking and becoming less and less of a great pond, may not be a great pond before it's gone. Question is, do we want to, do we want to make sure that we have enough frontage for lots along the Kennebunk River? Do we want another River One?
Well.
For you guys who don't know River One, do you? Firewater zoning.
It's underwater.
Yeah, a lot of the, a lot of the shore front lots are underwater, but the ones behind them that weren't supposed to be shoreline, uh, uh, shore front lots are above water and those are the shore front lots now. And they're, some of them are like a hundred feet, some of them are less than a hundred feet.
So can someone petition for an exception? So this is just hard and fast? Well, I personally like having some parameters. You know, if you want to make it all two hundred feet, I guess that's okay, but.
Make two hundred feet something.
But I don't think we should leave it unstated.
I'm not sure the state would let us do that either. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm by Tom's suggestion of just two hundred feet regardless of use.
Yeah, go with that too.
Next, based on the state number, two hundred feet.
Yeah, that's what they have for limited residential. Yeah. Also, I don't know if it's a step back. We already have that. And besides, it's a floodwater, so you have to be out of floodwater.
My, my.
Or make a motion then.
My, my concern.
Yeah.
Is that somebody comes along and they want to put a tire warehouse down there. It's a commercial use and we're going to let them on the river with two hundred feet of frontage.
There's only, there's only like three properties that.
Right now. But what happens in the future? What happens if somebody, somebody buys all three pieces of property and they decide they want to put up?
So is there no commercial development there?
Along the river?
Yeah.
Yeah. Wellness centers there.
Right.
And, uh, the house associated, that used to be the, um, uh, Warren's. Yeah, those playhouse offices. Then you got the, uh, of course, then we have the small utility that, there's a pom house for KKW. Then there's a strip of land.
I don't think that's buildable.
Not buildable on Walker's Lane. Yeah, on the west side of Walker's Lane, to the river in there, it's just, there's no, it's built.
Yeah, so it's not really all that much to build on, it's, it's, it's commercial property.
Right. And it doesn't affect inland properties. Because it says with frontage on Brimstone Pond or Kennebunk River. So you might be like, you, you might be within the short resource protection district, but your lot isn't on the river.
Yeah, that's fair.
Actually has more, it has less impact in there than it does in the. Yeah, then you wouldn't have to go unless it's on the, it's actually got waterfront property. So shore frontage is strictly shore frontage, you are on the edge of the water of those two resources and that's it.
That's the reason for it.
Yeah. So we get rid of that, and so we don't have that issue of you have a little wetland there, that's a two acre wetland and now suddenly you have to have two hundred feet of frontage on a wetland that's fifty feet wide.
Do we need a motion on that or?
Well, you want to just, would you just leave it as shore frontage on Brimstone Pond or Kennebunk River?
Yep, we're, we're still going to need a motion because we're going to modify, we're going to have to go through a public hearing. Because we're amending the.
I'll make that motion then, just to change it to shore frontage, frontage on Brimstone Pond, Walker's Lake River, side around two hundred feet, scratch the line below.
Yeah.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. The next item up is the rural conservation district. I propose we table that. And the, and the reason I want to table it is I want to have a discussion about NFPA one oh one. And I'm afraid we won't get to it.
You won't.
What we were doing with, um, with the, uh, with the space plan has a lot to do with our state. RC, we have a lot of issues to deal with it. We have the comp plan that came up with ideas, we've got ideas and we're going to be doing some.
Thank gentle people.
We're going to have, we have all, some big issues there to, to make some decisions on in terms of design. And we need to get started on it. And rather than tackling, tackling the R two, R three debacle, maybe we should just go to RC because I think RC sets the, that sets the tone for the other two districts.
Yeah. I think it will.
And I think if, you know, they call for density bonuses, TR, you know, TR, just, uh, TR, TDRs and, um, transferred development rights and innovative ways of preserving open space. It works with what they're, what we're going to do with, with the ACT folks and it will work with, uh, it'll define what the, the best incentive standards we can come up with that might be applicable in, when we talk about the R three district, which is a transition district.
So living residential and rural conservation.
Board might want to get rid of it, might now want to get rid of it, talk to the conflict. But we set a big standard.
So moving on to NFPA one oh one?
Yep, I was, I was just.
This is. This is something that the Board of Selectmen have approved, and we have to schedule a public hearing on.
They have heard this?
Consideration February twenty fifth, two thousand nineteen, evidently that doesn't really work, they should. You know, I read, I read February twenty fifth, two thousand nineteen, and I thought this coming February, which is twenty twenty.
Correct.
But this is, this is what they want us to approve.
Well, they want us to, I'm not sure that's necessarily true.
With the chief wants us to approve.
Well, yes. The chief's made some amendments in here after talking to you.
Oh, okay.
And they're, uh, they're in red, and the chief apologizes he couldn't be here tonight because he's on duty in Saco.
What excuse is that? That's a pretty good.
We paid him, we sent him a lot of money, I'm sure he did. There's only part time.
So, um.
I have a problem with this right off the bat.
Do I have that?
On.
I didn't print that out.
Article nine, fire response accessibility. Item number two, road and parking design, all private ways, subdivision roads, private driveways and parking lots shall be in conformance with the Town of Arundel's Street Design and Construction Standards Ordinance. Our subdivision is not under the, that, um, regulation. Yep.
Kevin, do you have to have extras of that?
Yep.
I.
Press the link goes down here.
I didn't print it out.
Who hasn't brought their package?
Me.
I used to sit where he had his. Few years ago, I sat up there where he had his.
Would you just say kids and me?
Kid, it's like kids and me.
Oh. Like kids and me.
Well, except that the very article two says that this ordinance shall be administered by the planning board, the fire chief, or the chief's designee, or the CER. And when you get over to the, to the rest of it, the planning board is taken out completely. Well, actually, it's not. We could make a decision and you would not be able to appeal it.
Well, it says the planning board, the Arundel Fire Chief, or the Fire Chief's designee.
But if you go to article fifteen.
So it sounds like.
The planning board has been stricken.
Do we wanna be stricken?
We can make a decision and nobody can, we can't, if you tick off about it, probably not a good idea.
Oh, yeah, we've been frost out.
Yeah. I don't know, I don't, I'll tell you something honestly. This came out of, uh, out of the, uh, street design, uh, because of the staff review committee and the tendency of, of doing it, having a staff review committee, um, you know, uh, meeting and the fire alarm will go off and then goes the fire chief out, you know, and somebody's gotta be designated to stay in. But there's a snowstorm and the public voice, bar we can't be there, so they assign a designee. It's the fire chief.
It, yeah.
It's the fire chief, the designee, no, the fire, the buck ends with the planning board, the buck ends with the town planner, the buck ends with the CEO, the buck, the buck ends with the fire chief.
So I've told, I've told you the problem I have with article nine, article fifteen strikes the planning board.
Yeah.
For appeals.
Looks to me like it's just.
Except.
It's just an oversight and not striking it from article two.
Yeah.
Well, then they also need to take it out of six because the affirmative vote of three members of the Board of Appeals shall be necessary to grant an approval or permit on appeal from a decision of the code enforcement officer, fire chief, or fire chief's designee, or to grant an appeal from a decision of the planning board. But if you look in article, at items one, two, and four, or one, three, and four, rather, you can't appeal our decisions.
I'll read if you find it in six, I'm sorry. Seven. Article six, you said?
Oh, no, 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 article fifteen, section six.
Yeah, okay. Okay, yeah.
But in the first part of it, you can't appeal it at all, but in article six.
Right, so I think they just didn't, they just didn't strike it most to location.
Subdivision for five, fire protection measures and performance for section twelve, one, B two of the normal land use ordinance.
Which one was that?
Article, s- article eight, section three.
Article eight, section three. Oh, yeah.
But that, and then that's, that directs you to five point seven of zoning ordinance, so. Here we got the runaround that we've been spending all this time trying to avoid. Wow.
Well, I, I object to article eight in its entirety because it's subdivisions which are explicitly the purview of the planning board. Yeah, this may be a very.
It references all new residential construction use, subdivision sets defined in the subdivision regulations of the Town of Arundel.
That's right, and it may make sense for us to put this in the subdivision, but not to have it in a standalone ordinance.
It's, I, it's my understanding, the selectmen wanna have all of the fire protection stuff consolidated in one ordinance that is outside of the purview of the planning board.
Not if it affects the subdivision.
And I was going to say, there, there are things in here that do not reference the zoning ordinance, which has very specific standards on hydrant location, on volume of cisterns, on. Yeah, this is.
This ordinance.
No, you know, there's another problem, parking lots and, there's nothing in park, about parking lots in the, um, street design and construction standards. Right? There's also nothing about parking lots in there.
It, it, it doesn't make any sense when, in the, in article twelve by, you're right.
And the second article twelve, which is supposed to be article thirteen.
Oh, yeah?
It's also, our, our, our board involved there too.
Yeah, this ordinance may be amended by referendum, amendments must be submitted to the municipal officers by the planning board, following the requirements below for publishing and posting a public hearing.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, then it says.
Isn't this a standard?
This is a selectman ordinance.
I thought this is a selectman ordinance, so what do we have to do with it?
Other than, I have no idea. That, that, this is just a very confused.
This ordinance should be reviewed by the Town of Arundel Planning Board every three years.
Right.
With the fire department's input, it's our ordinance apparently.
Well, but they took us out.
They took us out.
So either we're in or we're out.
We have, there's a real.
We have no authority but all the responsible.
That's right, and all the blame.
This is, this is not good.
Okay, I think we have to, uh, especially the chief.
Article, uh, we're talking about the road and parking.
Yeah.
All, everything shall be in conformance with Town of Arundel. So does, with the design, does that mean, the way I could, you could interpret that is that a existing private way would need to be brought up to new standards if that, uh, the street design standards changed?
Oh, I like the way you think.
Yep.
Yeah, they say that.
I like that way you think then. Which one was that?
Nine, number two.
Everybody in town's gonna have to upgrade roads.
Right, yeah. So I mean, you could, I mean, I'm sure what they meant was shall be designed in conformance, but.
Wow, that's a very good point.
And, and it conflicts with itself all over the place. Because in, what is this one? In eight, number twelve, section twelve, all proposed roads subject to this code shall meet requirements set forth in the Town of Arundel subdivision regulations. And then you go to nine, section two, all private ways, subdivisions, private driveways and parking lots shall be in conformance with the Town of Arundel's street design.
Right, so we have a conflict.
Yeah, so they have to figure out what our role is. And, and, and if they're going to do land use ordinances, then the planning board is supposed to be a part of that, correct?
Planning board is the regulatory authority.
So then they can't, they can't take us out.
But thi- this was, this was attached, so this must have come to you with it as well, cause this was attached.
Yeah, that, that's what was originally proposed, that's what originally.
Oh, okay.
So is this date on here supposedly correct?
Uh, no, that's when they were proposing to do this.
Okay.
Isn't this about the time we were having this dispute about the group planning board's authority or not?
Yeah.
So this stems back to them.
I, I can also assure you that the town attorney did not review this.
Yeah, definitely not.
Well, clearly they're conflicted about us, they want us, but they don't want us. I'm, I'm with Jamie, they want us to take all the responsibility and all the blame, but none of the glory, if there is any.
We could always mark it up and send it back.
No, I said if there is any.
We, we could mark it up and send it back to them, where it should say.
Not tonight.
No, not.
Not without getting our feet.
But that's, I mean, there's just way too much that needs to be fixed.
Yeah, especially eliminate, uh, any appeal process, uh, any decisions from the planning board is, is, I don't know, wrong. I mean, that means.
Yeah, the, 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 the judicial body without it.
Yeah, right.
Executive body.
Oh, I know, exactly.
That's, that's.
Yeah, it's crazy. So we could say we wanna, we wanna, we wanna, you know, one hundred and fifty thousand gallon cistern, and there's no way you can appeal that.
That's right.
Costs one half million dollars to install or whatever. You'll sleep better at night.
I don't, it seemed to me that we should not put a lot of the time into this, so why don't we just?
If you think it costs a million.
Very, right, very, very, uh, succinctly pointed out to them, it's rife with conflict and, and jurisdictional.
Jurisdictional.
Issues, please re, look at this carefully.
Emphasis on rights.
Do you want, do you want me to go and tell Keith that tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay, I got no problem, I'm not working.
Why are you good though, chief?
I'll tell them both, if, if, if chiefies are on.
Uh, I don't know, yeah, yeah.
What's he gonna do with that, though?
It's really more the selectmen, isn't it?
Yeah, it really is.
Yeah, I wouldn't put it on his plate, doesn't he have enough to do?
I go get it to Keith and I'll say.
Take it right back to the selectmen.
All he's trying to do, all he's actually trying to do is he is trying to get NFPA one oh one.
Yep.
Which is the state law in the state of Maine adopted by the Town of Arundel. It is the state law, life safety code is the statewide, is recognized by the US, by the Maine Fire Marshal. And when you have the fire marshal review things, he will apply one oh one. And we need to apply it in all the other areas it's supposed to be applied.
Would, would it not be the best, uh, course to make the messenger of this message, uh, town council?
Could be.
I, I think that would be the case, and we're not getting into, into a.
Yeah.
Spinning contest with another body, let them, let them hear this from, uh, a drafter.
Well, perhaps the planning board chairman could go and talk to the town manager and say, I think it would be a good idea if Leah were to review this, because I think there might be some incongruence.
And so really, if, if it's adopted, couldn't we simply reference it, you know, in the subdivision? There's certain things that, that aren't in here that we do. There, there is no reference here to, to, uh, cisternes, there's no reference to amount of water, which we got from the chief, the farmer chief, if you recall.
That we have in our subdivision.
Yeah, we have it in the subdivision, our subdivision goes back to our zoning ordinance, and maybe we'll wanna just do it the opposite. But the, the thing about our zoning ordinance is our zoning ordinance applies to all development, not just subdivision. It applies to commercial, a commercial project which is not a subdivision, it applies to even family divisions, um, and, which are not subdivisions. It, it requires you to be within a certain distance of a water source, and if you aren't, you're supposed to provide it. So, you know, it's, so that the, the importance of keeping in, in the zoning ordinance goes beyond just subdivision. And, you know, and you know how Marty feels about how many, how many feet you gotta be from a hydrant, you know, as a commercial space, there's nothing else in any ordinance that, that addresses that issue. Or gives the fire chief authority, except for that zoning ordinance. So it'd be great if we had a fire ordinance that, that had all that, and I think that's where you originally started, was you had all the stuff that we had in our various ordinances and put it all in the fire. Yep. But, um, there's a real question, who's got authorities here?
Yeah.
So let's send it back to the.
I will, I will take it to Keith. And say that from the planning board's point of view, I think we need to have the town attorney review this. Inconsistencies and.
I think the, the politics of this is important.
That'd be good ask, cause I'm meeting with Leah on Monday. And I'll, I'll let me handle it.
I will, I will ask.
Is, uh, is Leah back in the fold as our town attorney?
What she means?
Remember, I don't think she was out there.
I thought, I thought I remember, uh, saying that there was another member at Bergen Parkinson that was gonna be taken.
Yeah, she was committed to a concrete.
Yeah.
I don't know if Keith's gonna be in.
I don't know. Uh, Erin is, uh, the, the lady's name is Erin, she's actually a town, she's a resident of town. Uh, she is the new, um, um, she's a protege of Leah's, she's right now working on land use law in municipal law, that's what she's.
She's a newbie? So when you, when you reference Leah, do you mean Leah or do you mean Erin?
You, it's in between, it's Erin.
Okay. Really?
Claire, can you say Erin?
Okay, so are we done?
I believe so.
I really like it.
Unless, unless somebody has something else they wanna discuss.
Do we have any other business?
No, everything else works, we, well, we had the RC, but we're gonna table that.
Wow, I've read the note.
And we got the corrections.
Who could turn?
The next, the next meeting is December twelfth.
December twelfth.
December twelfth is the last meeting we have this year. And at this point, I think we have one idea.
December twelfth, yeah, December fifth, I thought.
No, December twelfth.
Really?
I'm on on December fifth.
I lied to people.
Oh, that's good, cause that'll get this stuff in earlier.
Well, I'm here on the fifth and the twelfth, so whatever day, if he can't be here, and it is the fifth, I can be there.
Okay, so we're doing it the twelfth, so I can.
I know, well.
So I'm here if you, if you need me.
Cause we talked, we, I wanna say we, we told Walter Woods it was the twelfth.
Oh.
I don't know.
Well, I don't know if he's gonna have anything for us.
He basically said, I'll have it whenever you need it.
That's right, and we told him the, we told him the twelfth.
Pretty much what he said.
Yeah, it's the last meeting.
I don't recall, but he said he.
He said he.
Right, so, so, uh, Jason will get it to me on time.
And when do we start back up again?
And if he, if he doesn't, cause you're almost out of time right now, you don't have it, you're out of time.
Yeah.
The second week of January.
First is Wednesday, right? The next meeting, so if it's the twelfth, I better make sure I got that.
Two and a half weeks.
I'm going to Christmas.
Yeah, it would be. And then we, uh, our next meeting is gonna be the ninth of January.
I'll be here for the twelfth and then on the twentieth, I'm going to California.
So we'll have, we'll, we'll meet on the twelfth of December, and then we don't meet again until the ninth of January. So we'll have, we'll, we'll meet on the twelfth of December, and then we don't meet again until the ninth of January.
Ooh, I'll be here.
So I, yeah, I won't be here on the ninth, but I'll be here on the twelfth.
Okay.
You can join your motion.
Wait, Roger goes fourth?
I need a motion. Motion was made on the third. We're outta here.